People that have gone to single stream, if we were to go to single stream, um, there would be some, there would be some savings. As you know, my department is more, is not very labor heavy as far as a portion of my budget. Uh, we, we don't have a lot of folks, there's a lot of expenses, but it's not, it's not payroll. So there wouldn't be a lot of savings in managing the recycling, single stream versus source separated, which is how we do it. Um, but we would absolutely forfeit any revenue. If you throw it all in one basket and send it to somebody, uh, and there's a place in Asheville, there's a place in, in Charlotte. Um, but you're looking at, at best, uh, net zero. And some places are charging five and ten dollars a ton just to, to accept those recycling, uh, commodities. Um, so that's why we don't do it, um, is because we are not set up to handle it single string. Um, and so we would just have to pack it in a truck and send it down the road. And we would lose the revenue, but we would not offset that with two hundred and fifty thousand in savings. And there's, there's, there's a frequent argument, and I'm not discounting it, I don't think it's giving you the full picture. There's a, there's a decent argument about people will, will recycle more if they can just throw it in one place. Um, and that's probably true, uh, data I've seen is, you know, maybe a twenty percent increase. Um, but what they won't tell you and what nobody ever talks about is, um, the result on the back end. How much of that is contaminated to the point, uh, that twenty-five or thirty percent of that winds up going back into someone else's landfill? Glass and shredded paper are just impossible, even in a fifty million dollar state of the art facility, uh, to keep from contaminating your paper and your, your, your commodities of some value, which is a very short list today. Uh, but that's, that's why we have stuck with source separation. If we were a county that didn't do much recycling and we were just gonna start a program, obviously, I would, I would advocate, let's go single stream and just kinda let it do its thing. Um, we have a substantial program built, um, and while I'm certain there are those that, that don't utilize us, uh, because they have to source separate.
They're not gonna be utilizing Jackson County.
I don't think they're gonna be going to Jackson County.
Unless they take the labels off everything.
Um, but that's, I mean, does that, does that explain what you want to know?
Did you talk to Jackson County, does it cost them money?
Uh, I haven't talked to them lately about it, I mean, I know, we, I actually.
It's so much easier for the customer, like you say.
Right, well, and I'm hoping, I mean, if you look at, if you look at going to Carson or Iola versus going to, um, Otto or Buck Creek or Holly Springs where you have the containers, you know, you're not sidling down this, this dark hallway, um, the containers are open and, and the design that, that I wanna utilize will really open the centers up a lot. Um, as you know, anybody that lives out towards Carson community, um, it's not uncommon to have traffic stopped in both directions decent way down the road. Um, when we did this at Buck Creek, which was set up identical to Carson, just a smaller footprint, uh, we could hold three cars before we were in the road. At Carson, we can probably hold five or six before we're in the road. Uh, at Buck Creek now, we can hold twelve vehicles before we're in the road. And there's multiple points, multiple points for users to be doing their thing at the same time. Uh, and not be in each other's way if they're only doing trash or only doing recycling. So that's what we wanna mimic, uh, at the other centers. And do it, frankly, doing away with the ramps and all the space that's taken up in having a two-level center, uh, is, is gonna help us out a lot without increasing our footprint.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, in connection with the lowest responsible bidder, would recommend that you have the minutes reflect and identify that lowest responsible bidder.
May I give some candid feedback on recycling?
Is this pertinent to this vote?
It's pertinent to what he's talking about. Um, I'm passionate about recycling, I'm up in manufacturing, I'm up in an all fast manufacturing, different materials, plastic, wood, metal. I'm currently serving as a EHS manager for Shaw Industries in two facilities, Christy City and Franklin, North Carolina. The facility that I use for my personal use is the one that's down there on the south side of town going towards Otto. It's over there by the volunteer auto fire department, and it's great facility, I like it. I can pull in to the side, take my bags that I have, that I use, put my plastic in, I have two trash cans at home. Grab my plastic, put it on the table, I can bust it out and throw it in the bin that I need to throw it in. It's very convenient, very user-friendly.
Thank you.
All right, Paul in favor with Chester's suggestion change?
Do we need to say out loud the, the names or just make sure she?
I think it's recorded in your presentation, I just think they need to be pulled from that presentation and included in the minutes.
This one highlighted right here, Baker?
Yes, Baker's waste for the compactors and waste quit for, uh, the recycling containers.
Are you still gonna stay on the convenience center?
Um, I, I can stay on convenience center to talk to you about what you wanna talk about, or we can go to the last one, which is the RPC and come back, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm still missing some votes on this. Yeah.
But let's, let's wrap this one.
All right.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, do you have a question you wanna address before we get on to the next one with him?
Something to do with convenience center, but I don't know if it's appropriate.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Great presentation, great document, I can have the chance to read it on that copy. Could we get something worked up like that? Uh, James spoke earlier, twenty years ago, we started the staffing of convenience centers.
Yes, sir.
We did it on part-time employees, keep them under a certain number of hours. No benefits.
Right.
Port of Johns.
In most places.
Uh, it was set up kind of as a temporary thing, just what I interpreted twenty years ago, till we could figure out a better way, better way to do it. We ain't figured out a better way. I was shocked in the gas that we have one employee making seven dollars and a half an hour.
Uh, we actually have eight.
Eight employees, Macon County employees, making seven dollars and a half an hour. I've never been a strong advocate for spending government money, but that's, that's a disgrace. These people are the face of Macon County, they make thousand, fifteen hundred people.
Yes, sir.
And I've never had a bad experience with any of them, and I.
I, I agree.
It's, we can do better, seven dollars and a half an hour.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, uh, it's, I've always been embarrassed by it, but.
I know we're on a budget and I don't like to do any of your spending and all that, but can we get some sort of recommendation or something that's equitable?
Would that come out of your enterprise fund?
Of course.
That's a, that's an enterprise fund, right?
But you gotta have revenue to support it, you don't wanna take fund balance to support ongoing salaries, cause he has a fund balance like a general fund.
We raised, we raised a tipping fee, what, four years ago?
See, he had to appropriate fund balance though this year to achieve some of the projects, so he, this point, I mean, I'm kinda, you don't really have excess revenues.
We don't, um, and Paul, did I hand you something that I didn't hand anybody, anybody else?
I have no clue, I've got three days worth of reading, I'm supposed to read five minutes.
I'm giving you that, I'm giving you that because you asked for it. I will make a fuller, uh, presentation on it. There are some pieces of this, I started looking into it, obviously, uh, when you ask. Um, there are some proposals, there's some, some, some ideas, uh, as to what we might could do. Um, there's two pieces, are, yeah, there's two pieces of this that I haven't, I haven't been able to complete, but I am happy to come back and make a presentation to the full board regarding, uh, recommendations. Short of that, I'm happy to include them into my budget package for next year.
I'd say you come back next month and tell us, I mean, this, these folks, this is, this is horrendous.
I, I, I agree.
And their collection rate on the fees is.
And that, that goes into the two things I have not been able to accomplish yet.
We gotta, we gotta address that, seventy-five percent, is that what you're estimating?
I don't know if Derek or someone, I didn't, I didn't have time to get by the tax office to get an updated list. Uh, basically, what, what Paul and I had discussed is, uh, as a potential means to pay for, to pay for such a thing, uh, et cetera. Uh, we have a couple of holes in our, in the enterprise fund, um, one of which, uh, is the ad valorem compliance rate, y'all get reports on, it's usually ninety-seven, ninety-eight plus. Uh, but if you look at the compliance rate for solid waste fees, it may be twenty points lower. Um, and so that means that there's a lot of people out there that are paying all but that last ninety-five dollars. A couple of things, one, I did go through our ordinance.
Do we know why that is?
I didn't know you could do that.
Because it's a lien on property, just like the, the other.
The, step one is, no utility fees, with the exception of solid waste fees, can fall under the, the machinery act. Solid waste fees can, uh, and if so long as you have it in your ordinance that says you intend to do it that way. We do have it in our ordinance, um, it's, 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 I mean, I don't, I don't wanna say why it's happening, cause I don't know, it's not.
Doesn't matter, let's just fix it.
Um, but the bottom line is, you know, that's, it turns out to be a couple hundred thousand short of, of where.
That might be ten years' worth of money, is that what you're talking about, the past ten years or?
No, I'm talking about eight.
Cause looking at Teresa's January report, regular taxes were ninety-five and a quarter, your landfill fees were ninety-one point one-two.
Well, we're doing much better.
So.
The last time I looked at it, it was like in the seventies, so, so not as many people are taking that option. Uh, another thing that I would, would, would introduce, if I can remember who told me they did this, uh, I've got feelers out, but nobody's replied. Uh, there are some counties that have adopted a resolution that says if people make a partial payment to what they owe the county, that those payments would be applied to everything else and ad valorem taxes last. Um, building permit fees, um, social services, health department, any kind of fee that the county has that don't, that doesn't have the protections that Chester was referencing, um, with the policing powers of the machinery act to go after. Um, the, the, the monies be applied to that, so that anything that is left unowed kinda stays in that one, that one place, easy identifiable in the ad valorem tax column. Uh, tax departments don't really like that, cause they want that, that first number to stay up there.
Let's just, let's, let's, let's make, let's take this on and work on it, we can do better, we can do a lot better.
We wanted to discuss this again at our next meeting. Good, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving along, our recycling center, processing center, repair and improvements.
Okay, um, finally, um, and again, I apologize, we, we did not know we were gonna get the check until after the, uh, agenda was put together. Um, but, uh, some months ago, our building was, was struck. Um, there are a couple of pages of pictures of the, uh, in the back of this, uh, if you wanna reference those. Um, we, it actually took me several months to get anyone to price repairs, uh, because of the nature of the buildings. Um, you, you have to have an engineer certify and stamp the weight load on every mid-cross member upright and everything, and nobody wants to put all the money into developing a proposal that they might not be awarded. So, we finally did get, uh, a proposal, and you'll, you'll see that in front of the pictures. Um, but I asked for, when we got the proposal, I asked for three different proposals, uh, two of those I've included in your packet. Um, one of those is for a repair, uh, just to, just to put this building back together. Um, you can see, you can see the column that's mostly damaged, and we have shorted up temporarily to keep the roof from collapsing. Um, we did have a structural engineer and Mr. Morgan come and inspect and, and sort of give a nodding of heads that, that we could be in this area, uh, with this temporary repair. Um, the building has continued to fall slowly, uh, some of the welds are breaking loose, and we're, we're gonna try to attack that. Um, so the first bid was to put this thing back, but the second one was to demolish this building and continue the front addition. Uh, if you look at the first page of pictures, in the top left, you'll see that's actually two buildings, uh, perpendicular to each other and just kinda stuck together. Um, and so removal of this back part of the building and extension of the front building all the way out the back, uh, was the second, the second quote that I requested, uh, and frankly, is my, my recommended course of action. Um, if you, looking at the pictures, um, well, first of all, this back building is, is actually not so much of a, as of a, of a, a building you would work out of as a place you would store hay. Um, and I've also come to learn through talking to different contractors and different structural engineers about this process, or about trying to get a fix, determine a fix for this process. Every nut, bolt, and sheet, piece of sheeting on this thing goes into its structural soundness. So the very fact that we pulled this wall off twenty-five years ago to attach this other building to it, already diminished its structural capacity. So, um, secondly, because these two buildings are just kinda made it together, uh, you can see what's happening to our mixed paper.
Who hit the post?
Um, a driver for our contracted hauler.
So they got insured?
We, yeah, uh, did I not say that part?
No.
So Lori, may or may, do you have?
Budget amendments, yeah.
Lori has a budget amendment here, that, uh, part one of the budget amendment is to, uh, in, increase our budget, uh, forty-two thousand.
Four sixty-six.
Four sixty-six, uh, and then to appropriate that, to accept that revenue, and then to appropriate that into capital improvements uh, towards the repairs on this, uh, on this building.
Does that cover the repairs?
No, then there's another, I just did one amendment.
Right.
Passed that down to Paul.
The repairs are?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand he would take from his enterprise fund, fund balance, to try to have enough cover.
The actual repair, the repair price was forty-one, three thirty-one, I'm sure that's why you're asking that question. Uh, it was, it was basically a negotiated settlement.
Has the county passed on that?
Passed what?
Passed on the acceptance of that settlement.
I don't know, we got a check, I, I don't know that.
If we did the check, cover the damage.
I mean, if it's a negotiated, if it's a negotiated settlement.
They made an offer.
Yeah, they should pass on it.
Yeah, let's, let's take that money.
Probably never been in a wreck, Chris.
Fortunately, I have not.
So they hit the building, they made an offer, insurance company made an offer, we took the money.
You had, I mean, understand that this, this proposal is, is shaky at best. I mean, it's, I went through four or five companies even to get this, and there are a lot of assumptions.
They ain't talking about the proposal, they're talking about the check.
Well, I'm saying, the check was based on what they, what they saw in the proposal.
Yet we need another hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. In your package, you'll see there's two proposals, a repair proposal in the amount of forty-nine, three thirty-one. I just don't want to repair the building. Uh, if we repair it, we still have a less than adequate building, we still have three posts that are constantly gonna get hit. Uh, and you can see the one that's bad, but the other two have certainly been hit through the years. Uh, this gal, this valley drain, uh, that rains in the building, if it's raining outside, uh, there are just a lot of problems, uh, with this building, and like Paul mentioned earlier, it was kind of a, let's do it twenty-five years ago, and with the amount of materials that we're processing now and need to store and trying to ship, it's just insufficient, uh, even from a safety factor, as I have learned.
Chris, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Did you get multiple bids on the new building?
I, this is, no, I have not, our, what we're doing tonight is, is an approval of concept to replace the building rather than repair the building, and to accept, to appropriate these funds into my budget. If y'all say no, just fix it, that's what we'll do. I, I just don't think that's the best course.
I guess my question, Chris, is why are we appropriating funds before we've received that price? We're just giving you a budget to go work with, is what we're saying?
It just, I mean, I, I can come back at the end, I mean, I'm sure I will, um, but.
It's just not our normal process in here, while I'm asking, so.
It's, it's, it's just trying to save a step, I mean, obviously, we would go through all the proper bid procedures and get a price. But again, we get into this, we get into this catch twenty-two of circular logic that I was in for months. Um, I'm not gonna give you a price because that's gonna cost several thousand dollars.
Did you have a plan from the bid on?
Sorry?
Did you, did you have a plan for the folks to bid on?
No, we have not, I mean, I don't know, I'm assuming this based on anecdotal evidence that this building might have been constructed by county folk back in the day, we don't know who the man.
I know that for the new building.
No, that would, that's part of the proposal, is to engineer and construct, uh, an extension of the existing building. Now, we do know who built the new section, so it would be, obviously, we would hope to get a favorable bid from them, cause they've got everything on hand. Um, and if you also look, I have exceeded, which is neither here nor there, um, but I have exceeded the difference amount by forty thousand dollars, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, one of those is wiggle room, but the other is, um, we would, Macon County would be responsible for, for soil bearing testing. Uh, an engineer's, a structural engineer's gonna say, this size column holding this size building is gonna take this much footer. Uh, but then, if we get into actually checking the soil, this much footer may become this much footer. Uh, looking at the picture on the bottom right, you can see a current, the current rear corner of the building, um, and where the pad and foundation are moving in separate directions at separate speeds. Um, so I am concerned a little bit about, um, the structural compaction. Um, also, because I know the history of how that land came to be. Uh, it used to be a hog lagoon. So, you know, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna make a whole lot of assumptions about, about the soil bearing tests.
I understand, um, where you're coming from now, Chris, and I personally, I think that, uh, basically, I agree with your recommendation that you need a new building over replacement, and I understand why, and I think long-term it'll pay off for the county and probably eliminate the problem that we're talking about now, if you can eliminate those center beams. Um, I personally, I think, would like to see a little bit more information, I understand time is of the essence, we, um, let's try and just knock this out of.
And like I said, I'm, I, I mean, obviously, you know, I put a number, it's on the thing, we can change that. I, I was, what I was really looking for was a, a nodding of heads in concept of going one way versus the other. Uh, I'm happy to, I, I'm happy to get you firm numbers and report.
Am I the only one that's seen it that way?
Oh, I think, this, this building's rotten, or, it leaks, you can't, you can't have a leaking building.
Yes, we're giving you a nod of heads.
Okay.
But now, the funding for this is, using, explain how, the transfer.
We received forty-two thousand, four sixty-six from insurance proceeds, so we appropriate that. Then he's also asking to appropriate a hundred and twenty-five thousand of this solid waste fund balance.
My fund balance.
From his fund balance, which right now sits at one.
Two million.
Two million?
Which we, we've appropriated about six fifty-seven, so you back that off, so about one point four.
Yeah, that, yeah.
If we, if we would use every penny of it, which he usually does.
Back to the insurance check. Uh, so we got the check?
We got the money.
Who negotiated the settlement with insurance?
Uh, they made an offer, and I said, yeah, let's, let's get it while we can.
Uh, Mr. Manager, did you, you wasn't part of that at all? Remember, I hit something, I had to pay for it.
Well, the repairs.
Is that in-house, was that one of our guys, or?
That hit it, no.
What is there, about five thousand dollars difference between the repair estimate and the payment?
I was wondering if it was deductible or tax.
Probably, it's probably, our deductible is five thousand.
Plus tax.
Oh, okay, so the.
They don't, insurance companies don't pay tax, so they're.
Was it the, was it the driver's carrier that paid that? So the repair estimate's forty-nine thousand, they settled at forty-two five, so. I think the bottom line is, probably it's not a bad settlement, I mean, the, the reality of it is, is when those things are done, um, they don't look at it necessarily and value it necessarily as a repair cost, they look at it from the state.
We've got a hundred percent replacement cost on all of our buildings, including that one.
That's our insurance, that, that's not, that's not.
But I mean.
That's not the, the driver's company.
But if you have, but isn't it true that if, that if their insurance company, if we've got a hundred percent, they want to have to abide by?
Yeah.
They should.
The reality is, is if he was getting pushed back from the, could not have litigated this claim for the five thousand dollars difference.
If you'd had a better bid than forty-nine thousand dollars, too, if it done that much damage, you could loosen all the screws, if ever, if the structural engineer said he totaled the whole building, and that's what it says in here. You'd have had a whole lot more than forty-nine thousand dollars.
Well.
Well, keeping in mind, there.
You got somebody that says they're gonna fix it.
There have been, there have, if you look at these things, these columns have taken numerous hits.
Yeah.
Um, the fact that this one was the one that finally weakened it enough to, to do real damage.
If that's the way the carrier is gonna evaluate, they're gonna look at that building not as if it was a brand-new, perfect building, they're gonna look at it in a depreciated state, and if it was already beat down pretty bad, they're not gonna pay you to put it back perfect and, and brand-new, they're just not gonna do that. It's not how we got here, it's where we're going. So you're gonna bring us numbers on the new building?
Yes, sir.
And could you take us on a tour?
Absolutely.
Say as much as Bill Construction does so far, you don't need a tour.
All right, we, I guess the budget minimum, it will change then, we need to get enough approval to accept the budget minimum of the check of forty-two, four sixty-six. And I'm understanding we're not gonna provide the, uh, we're not gonna appropriate the fund balance until we get the bids in for the new building.
Okay.
There you go.
We're in agreement, can I get a motion for that, so, Mr. Chairman? Got a motion, my Commissioner Higgins, second, my Commissioner Shills, all in favor?
Thank you, sir.
All right, Chris, thanks.
Thank you for this, that information. Yeah, it'll be a good discussion. I'm ready to go.
All right, discussion, uh, planning board priorities for fiscal year nineteen twenty, Commissioner Gillespie, liaison to the Macon County Planning Board. Carl, I'll let you lead in, unless you want me to?
Just like one brief comment, everyone should have a list in their packet of items that were submitted, uh, by members of this board. And I thought it would be appropriate that we discussed those items and prioritize them. And, uh, give that whatever is, is the consensus of the board being the most urgent or important item on the list to the planning board, and continue their work.
Ready one go first?
I guess I'll nominate myself.
I'm gonna vouch for Hannah Hala, I think it'd be a good, a good use of, of a planning board, just to plan out improvements to the Hala community. But that was just my submission, I'm not saying, hey, mine takes precedence, but.
No, no, well, we wanna talk, so, um.
We're gonna have to have someone to take that lead on that.
And we can give them more than one task, it doesn't have to be one solely out of all these. Um, I, I provided the one, um, which is number two on the list, was basically studying our, our homeless, low-income, uh, situation. I know Lowell's here tonight, and he deals with that, and Lowell, I think you mentioned to me the other day that you're, you house thirty, thirty, how many people do you house? Yeah, you can step up, yeah, step up, just a couple of questions, are you house about, how many people?
Um, we are, it's kind of a constant thing, but we stay full at around thirty-two people.
And you said you could double in capacity?
I, I could double the capacity if I could deal with the. I, I could double the capacity, if I could deal with the, with the, I could deal with some other issues.
My, my point is, is there's, there's, there's a really big, potentially big issue there.
Yeah, I mean, there's a huge issue in the county that, that kinda just gets swept over, uh, because most of the people that are homeless in this county are, they're not necessarily homeless, but because of the drug addiction issue, they're in, they're in drug houses where everybody pools their funds and their drugs together to come in and, uh, have somewhere to stay. Or they're in tents in the woods, or they're in places where a lot, you know, they're not out in the middle of town like it is in Asheville. Um, and then you get a lot of people that are very low-income, that have no, there's no recourse for them. Um, especially if they have a drug addiction problem or an alcohol problem, they kinda just get swept off to the side. Um, and so right now, we have, I have thirty-one people in the house, um, seventeen of which are children in our building. And, uh, and it's a sad scenario in our county when we, when, um, all, the, the ability to actually impact these folks is, is, um, is difficult, because there's so many different wheels in motion, doing so many different things, and nobody actually wants to work together to accomplish the goal. Uh, I don't, I don't, I'm not actually, we don't, we don't run a homeless shelter, I run a life recovery program. Where I take people that might be homeless, or alcoholics, or drug addicts, or have very serious issues with, with dealing with their money, or whatever the scenario is, they got them in that position. And try to help them eliminate the bad habits that got them there, and apply positive habits that get them out of there. Um, but we're treated, and, and everybody in, in the county and the town calls us a homeless shelter. Um, and so, yes, we do, we deal with some of the homeless issues, but the homeless issue only happens because there's, there's no other recourse, there's no, there's no other way to actually impact them. And, uh, and so then they end up on the streets, and then the only people that wanna talk to them are the ones that will do drugs with them. Or, you know, there's one guy that walks around town with a sign that says, I need beer money. And people will constantly hand him money all day to buy beer. Uh, and it's, it's a sad state, it's a sad time in, in not only our county, but in, in the whole nation, where we feed those kinda problems. And so I, you know, personally, and, and what, what me and my wife and my children have committed to do is to change that to the best of our ability with, with what we provide. Um, and so we, there's a lot of things that are, that are said about us, and a lot of opinions about what we do. Because I don't, I'm not gonna feed addiction, and I'm not gonna feed alcoholism, and I'm not gonna, uh, any part of it. Um, and so people get mad when they have to leave, because they don't wanna actually change their life, but we, I run a, a life recovery program, and we, um, I've had over five hundred people come through since we started. And I've been operating in this community for five years, um, the first part of it was kinda rocky between us and the county, and the building department and all the stuff, but uh, for the last couple of years, we've been very compliant with the rules in, of, of the county, and we've been compliant with the building department, we're trying our best to do what we can do to help impact this problem in our community. Um, and, uh, but it's a huge problem.
Right, but, and, and, and I'm not saying, I don't, I don't even know if this is a task what the planning board would be up for, but I think it's an important consideration, I don't know who else in the county that necessarily sent it to, to take a peek at it. I, I don't know, I mean, I, I hear your numbers, but I know there's other places in the county, too.
The last time we did, some type of. Healthy Carolinians did it. Healthy Carolinians is gone now, but I'm sure the health department.
Some type of, like, what are we looking at, number-wise, what are we looking at?
The comprehensive plan had that information, um, I think the last point in time collection was taken, that, that reference is in that comprehensive plan.
It was Jan, it was January thirtieth, is when they did the last one.
But that information is in that plan, and it seems to me like it was, uh, less than seventy in the draft of the comprehensive plan of, of actual homeless that were identified through the, it was the community health assessment?
Yeah.
Um, and again, I will, uh, double-check that draft, that was just something that, that I was reading through that comprehensive plan the other night.
Sure.
I think one thing that kinda needs to bear in mind, is we assign things to the planning board, that meet once a month. So, you know, you're getting an hour and a half, two hours, you know, having meetings go after a couple hours. Uh, so eleven, twelve times a year, so you should test them with something that's gonna require more time than that. Uh, they're gonna really get bogged down. Uh, one item that's on here, subdivision ordinance review, Jack, it's in the ordinance that that's, that the subdivision ordinance is to be reviewed every.
Subdivisionally every year, uh, the way it is now, I'm supposed to report as the administrator to the board of Mr. Henry. Problems we have with that ordinance, and that rest of everybody regarding the problem.
Okay, so we probably could check the subdivision ordinance review all. Just, just, just for thought.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see, I mean, we've tasked this planning board with the comprehensive plan, and a lot, but I'd like to see them do, I think there's an opportunity for the planning board to do some real planning, and I'd like to see him, uh, whatever Commissioner Gillespie is, is his liaison, but to tie that in with our, uh, space needs study and our comprehensive plan, I think that planning board, uh, would give them an opportunity to do, to have some real input and planning on what it's gonna look like in five years for our county buildings and, and different things, I just think the planning board would, uh, would relish an opportunity to do some real planning that's gonna mean something.
I think that, um, that's an excellent idea, especially once you receive, receive this space needs analysis, and so task them with reviewing that and providing us the recommendations.
What do you think, Carl?
But that's, that's not gonna come through until September-ish, probably. We wanna task them just based upon Commissioner Higgins' recommendation, we task them to plant some of the Nantahala stuff. And then we'll move forward to the, uh, space needs analysis following that, and that'll give them three months to study.
So you're gonna do Nantahala first, and then.
Community needs information on Nantahala.
What is Nantahala encompass, what does that encompass?
Which library, community building?
We did, well, we did that six years ago, so, you can pull that back up and read it, too. The library, uh, that's when we thought we had its place for the library. Uh, I think that's, I don't know about the community building, we just wanna tie it in with the school.
And, uh, utilization of the lease, or the due property over there, where the rec park is at. There's been this discussion, but they never used the deal.
I think it's just kind of looking at the whole, the community as a whole, and deciding.
Everything.
Yeah, what we're offering, that, with the county, are we providing the services we need to over there, or are we not? Um, the, some of the, the items that we're providing, I mean, we obviously know that there's issues over there in the library, or whatever, but they, they, let them look at this and give us a report on what, what we need to be addressing. Uh, what, what do they have that they're complaining, but maybe in reality, it's actually pretty good, um, it's just us knowing that.
I had to tell them.
Let them pull it together from, I'm missing, I'm missing, and a little, a little larger group than what we are.
I can speak for that board, but I would imagine they would be fine with going over there and having a meeting in Nantahala, as they've done in the past, too.
I mean, it'd be coordinating with the library board, uh, obviously, that's an issue, has been for years, let's do something about it this year.
Okay. Y'all go to that. And then we'll move them on to the space needs analysis.
Any other communities we need to look at, while we're looking at Nantahala, I mean, Nantahala is just a community, by the way, it's not.
I agree, um.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a town, it's not.
Well, well, let's, let's, let's roll with that thought for a second.
I'd like to.
What if we, um, Carl, what if we had them look at all the communities in general, and see what all the communities have as far as infrastructure goes, so it's not just Nantahala, it's, uh, Otto, it's. So, do you see what I'm saying? I, I couldn't tell you as a commissioner, uh, maybe I should know, but I don't know, I, I couldn't tell you what y'all communities have, the community building. Which ones might use a church, uh, versus having their own?
Might need one.
Uh, which community, which one of our communities have community buildings? Which ones use a church, which ones use fire department, um, just kind of look at, was there eleven, thirteen communities in our county?
Fifteen, pretty soon.
Fifteen.
Well, I think what's pushing Nantahala, it's, it has a library, you know, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, but, uh, Commissioner Bill made a good point, is, you know, what if, we broaden that just a little bit, and let's look at some of the other communities, too.
Start, start with Nantahala.
Start with Nantahala.
Does Otto need a library? I think we're gonna do libraries. Right, I mean, it's just a, it's a community, it's not a, it's not a town like Highlands or Franklin.
I thought you told them was gonna build a library.
We tried to. I'd love to build a library, but, and I think that where the existing one is, is the exact place to build it. But if we're gonna look at one community, I'm just saying, if we're saying that one community, do we need to look at other communities, see what their needs might be?
I don't think you can look at them all in conjunction, I think you have to take them one at a time, or it's, it's just exercise a few.
Some of them, I mean, you know, some of our communities, communities logistically can share, and it makes sense, whereas Nantahala, it's.
Isolated.
It's isolated, yeah.
Their topography penalizes Nantahala?
That's right. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, um, item eleven G, recreation discussion concerning the following items, welcome Seth. We'll start out with, uh, room rates for the Robert C. Carpenter Building.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I've got some handouts here.
Thanks, sir. Sir.
What you have in front of you is, um, the existing room rates, um, as they are today, and have been for the last seventeen years. Uh, I've been the director for a little over sixteen years, and there's not been a change in, in the room rates, um, since I've been the director. Uh, I couldn't tell you when the last one was, to be honest with you, um. We have recently done a, a total renovation of the Robert C. Carpenter Community Building, and, um, the rec commission said if, if we were ever looking at, at a possible increase, now would be the time, uh, to look at that. We, uh, we still understand that it is the community building, and we don't want to penalize folks, you know, it's not gonna be a, a, a big moneymaker, um, so if you look at the proposed rates, you'll see that there's, there's actually very little change, uh, to the, to the nonprofit, to the birthday parties, to the reunions, to, to that type of activity, you know, that, that goes on. Um, people that'll be more affected are the, the, for profit, you know, if you're using that building to basically make a buck. So, um, I wanted to get kinda your feedback, um.
Seth, I think it'd be important for you to mention that, um, or I'll mention it for you, how about that, that the recreation committee has studied this hard for the past three, past year?
Probably, yes, at least, we, we've been looking at it for a year.
It's been vetted, and I think they tend to a unanimous decision.
Yes, yeah, it, it was unanimous at the, at the meeting this afternoon to, uh, to bring these changes to, to you guys. And they would like to make them effective, um, on our budget, our new budget year, uh, July one of nineteen. It will, we used to be on a, on a three-hour block timeframe, uh, that, for some reason, it, it doesn't always work for me, well, they either want four hours, or two hours, or uh, a little different than, than the three, so this puts us on more of the, by the hour rental, with a minimum of two. Um, the, the two small rooms that we rent the most will be, uh, ten dollars an hour for nonprofits, which is very, very reasonable, you can't find a a room anywhere close to us, uh, that rents for that. And for profit, twenty dollars an hour, we, we basically just doubled the price for, for profit entities. Um, the multi-use and the conference room, uh, will be, will be asking fifteen dollars an hour, and thirty dollars for, for profit. All, all rooms will have a two-hour minimum, um, the gym, half a day, two hundred dollars for a nonprofit, full day, three hundred dollars for a nonprofit. And, uh, four hundred dollars for a profit, and six hundred dollars for the full day, for a profit. A, uh, we're also asking that every time that we have to put the protective, protective floor covering down on the gym, uh, it takes us about three hours to do, so we're gonna charge a hundred and fifty dollar fee to, to do that, it takes four guys about three hours to put it down and, and take it back up, we only do that for, for shows, so that'll be, um, six or seven times a year. Uh, our show rates, uh, it's been five hundred dollars a day for everybody across the board, whether you're senior games, Chamber of Mineral Society, um, Chamber of Commerce, or a gun show, you know, that's having it for, for profit. And, uh, we want to stick with the five hundred dollars a day for nonprofits, but go to a thousand dollars a day for the profit, uh, organizations that are actually making money on, on the show.
Is, is the thousand dollar profit, is, is that for, like, your gun show, your gym show?
It, it won't be for the gym shows, uh, the, any nonprofit that's having a show out there to kind of finance what they do for the year, um, the Chamber of Commerce, we, we don't consider them a, a, a profit organization. Yes, they, we, we do consider them a, a profit organization, because that's a private individual having a, having a show for, for themselves.
Is, is that a, remember, I don't know. A thousand dollars for a gun show, did you just destroy the ju, the gun show, you have to have a, I, I don't know.
I, I wouldn't think so, they, they're making, uh, they make money twofold at those gun shows, they, they rent the tables, and then plus the line's always out in the parking lot, you know, for people paying to get in, so I, I don't think that that will eliminate them from, from having guns. I, I would, I'd still say that that's probably the cheapest rent they'll get anywhere else.
Trust your judgment. Can we get a motion to approve or suggest changes, or leave as is, I mean, those are the three options.
Now, this came from their, from your board.
Yes, the, the rec commission, um, came up with these fees, and they support it a hundred percent.
You need a liaison, Mr. Tate, you support.
I do.
I have, I have a question, if it's okay?
Sure.
Your first item, the party and meeting room, ten dollars an hour for nonprofit, do you get both rooms for ten dollars total?
No, that's, that's, this, this is just in the party room and the meeting, not, not both, it's just a, a piece.
Same thing on the multi-use and conference. Multi-use charge is fifteen, conference.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Sorry, I, I should've made that one more clear.
And the game, you had game room on the other fee schedule, did that?
Uh, the game room is now the, the conference room, if you, if you remember, we made, uh, the nice conference room right there in the front.
All right, so game room is now conference.
And the party room did not exist, it was office space originally, but now we have a.
Okay, so the party room's new?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Let me ask you a question, I think I've done this to you, and I just, I just didn't know this, where all of a sudden, we call you and say, we got some people coming in, we need to have a little room here, talk about some things, I never left you any money, I just, when it's over, I walk out the door.
Usually, if, if it's for a, uh, like a, a political party, or, or something like that, it, there's, there's no charge. Uh, we don't charge the school system whenever they, we kinda partner with them all the time, we use their GMs for our rec space, so if they need, or if another county entity needs to use our building, we don't, we don't charge for them either.
The reason for your proposed increase is, what is the purpose of?
Uh, my main goal was to get off the, the three-hour block period, and just to charge by the hour, and if you, if you look, um, you get, you've got a whole lot better product now than you had before, number one, and number two, we've not adjust, or adjusted anything in the past fifteen-plus years. So, it, it's been, it's been the same, but like I said, it, for, for the, basically, the three-hour block, you're going up five bucks for, for the normal folk, the normal citizen that will rent the community building for a birthday party, or, or reunion, or, or just a, a meeting, uh, that's pocket change, really, uh.
Crumb?
Yes.
Crumb?
Yeah.
I just wonder why you want to increase fees, if it was to generate revenue, or to?
Well, it, it will generate a little, um, but that, that's not the main reason, it just needed to be done.
I like your first statement, it is a community building, it's owned by the taxpayers of Macon County and, and the initial fee structure you had limited its use somewhat, I mean. And I was just wondering if it was, the demand was so great that it justified in proposed fee increase, or if it was just.
Well.
Did you go raise the fee, come and raise the fee?
No, it, it does stay pretty busy, though. If, if you've ever been down there, you're never in that building alone, there's something in there every day.
Mr. Tate, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed rates as recommended by the Rec Commission Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill, we got a motion, you second?
I second it.
We're gonna second back Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're here, I had emailed county manager in regards to the number of tournaments out at Parker Meadows, and you had replied back to him with a list of those for last year. And looked like that facility received limited use, and one of the reasons was is one of your major organizations or users canceled tournaments because of lack of motel rooms?
Yes.
I'd like to talk to that person and if you have any more information that you'd like to share with this whole board, I thought that was, would be information that everyone might find interesting.
Well, and, and that was last year, and, and this year, I don't have a, a tournament director that is over a sanctioned organization that, that'll come here. So right now I have six tournaments on the books from twenty last year. Last year, the, our U triple S A guy who, who had our biggest tournaments the, the first couple of years, he was pulling teams from, from North Georgia, you know, all the way from Morganton. He started getting blowback from people having to go back to Jackson County and stay, you know, or to even Waynesville. Some folks got here and wouldn't come back the next day because they couldn't find a, a room, they just showed up automatically assumed, they didn't do their research ahead of time. I had a team mom hit me up when I was out there saying, you know, at, at four o'clock that evening, where do I need to go stay tonight? And, you know, you're limited here.
This also ties back to conversation that Tommy and I had, and if Tommy was here, he forgets remembering numbers, but we were, I think we picked, it's either nineteen seventy or nineteen eighty, I don't remember which year we picked as a comparison. There was more motel rooms available in Macon County in nineteen seventy or nineteen eighty than there is now, so.
I think there was two hundred beds in Franklin as we speak now. Now, we, on our website, we, we blew that up to, to get it to around four hundred, but you're still traveling down the border, you know, up to Highlands. Cherokee has called us basically asking when we have tournaments if we'll send people, you know, over there. But if, if I'm going and I'm speaking as a, as a travel ball coach and as a parent, I don't like to stay in another town if I'm coming to, coming to play. Everybody loves the facility, we, we run a top-notch tournament, and we drag the fields in between every game, you know, everybody has no problems whatsoever with, with the tournament venue, it's just a matter of, of lodging, it, it's the biggest issue. They, and now we ran into Asheville just opened a multi-field complex that's got turf in fields and, and everything else, but they've got the, the hotels to be able to book it. So we're gonna step back and, and punt and start running more single-day regional tournaments, you know, where people can come, they'll still eat in our restaurants, they'll still buy our gas, you know, they'll still spend money here, but we may not get the lodging, but. But, but, but for the, but for the most part, the motels stay full anyway. I don't think that any, any of the motels here are going out of business, so to speak, because of lack of, lack of people staying in them.
I hear we got more coming.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, potential Greenway connection under the town bridge?
Yes, a couple of months ago, David Culpepper of the Town Council came into my office and, and kinda threw something at me that he would like to see a joint effort with the county and the town to basically build the trail underneath the town bridges that will connect the Greenway from side to side. We've got the, the new bridge has a very nice sidewalk that, that goes across the, across the river. And now there are basically walking paths underneath both bridges where people don't have to cross the, the road, they go underneath. It's, it's not safe and it's, it's kind of, say, I mean, it, it is just a, a worn-out path through the grass. The town is willing to actually construct a trail just like the rest of the Greenway. They'll do the grading and all they're asking for us is to basically put a topper on it, whether that be gravel, or if we're willing to asphalt it, then they'll do the gravel, up, up to the, up to the base level. It'll be a great thing for the county, it'll tie us, it, it makes the whole thing safer, and if you can see pictures.
Seth, I think the two amounts were, I think for graveling were, I'd suggested personally, an amount of about a thousand. I think you'd suggest come back with a paving estimate, if we pave instead, it would be.
If we pave, and that's not with any gravel, that's where the town doing all the gravel up to the level of paving is sixteen eight eighty-one, is the one estimate that I got, I didn't get multiples, I just, I was curious to see what, what the cost would be.
Do you have discussion with DOT?
Everything is, is on par, DOT said that they, when they built the new bridge, they've, they kinda designed it.
How about you then with paving?
Well, I, I've not spoke for them about that yet.
That's what we need to do.
Okay.
Where, where exactly would this be in relation to the, to where the bridges are?
Some bridges, other new bridges.
Right, under, right here.
It's the red, this, this is for all quarters, you'll circle down that hill and then both, under both bridges, they just tie back into the Greenway on the other side of the road.
One thing we do, we have to do, there's some.
Who'd you say?
Some, some concurations, not conservation easements, but there's some easements for basically water protection right in that area. We gotta look at those and see if there would affect us or if we could get clean water, trust fund.
Everybody kind of is, is on board now, I met with Jack this morning and, and Justin Setzer is kinda heading up the, that side of it, getting all the, talking to the appropriate people.
I've, I've got the maps of where those easements are, that would be a deal.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, if, if it's okay, based on what Commissioner Bill offered up there, without thought, I think you, I would like to see, since I'm gonna be meeting with the town about this next Thursday, you have two Thursdays, that we're in somewhat of an agreement that this is okay project and that we will help fund it. Some way, we might not have to fund anything, but if we do, we'll.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a, a great addition to the Greenway, the Greenway is a, is a great addition to our county right now, and.
So somewhere between five thousand and sixteen thousand.
I think sixteen thousand.
And we might have to fund anything if the.
If the DOT will, will pave it, that would be, that would be ideal.
Is that kosher or DOT?
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Shields, is that kosher?
I'd like to invite you to our next Frogs meeting.
Commissioner Bill?
Now, we, in speaking with that, the, the Frogs are in full support of this project, I've got a, a letter here from.
I'm with them, I, I agree with all of it too, but. I'll try and get an update, making sure they got the updated information.
Okay.
It's on the third Tuesday, next, next week from today, week from today. Four thirty, Frogs building. I don't think they would like to have just an update.
I will be there.
Seth, I'll meet you there.
Okay.
Alright Seth, item number three, potential locations for dog park.
Alright.
They'll wanna talk about that too.
Okay, I am sure that you guys are aware that the county does have a dog park existing, it is. It is at Wesley's Playground. The site now, though, has posed a problem with it being next to the wetlands with the clear water, trust fund, and it sits under a transmission line for Duke Power. So both organizations have, have basically reached out to us, asking us to try to find an alterior location for, for these, or for this dog park. And trying to get things as cheap as I can, I, I obviously looked at county parcels first and looked around, looked around, looked around, and, and I, I'd overlooked this, this property, you know, the Frog Town property. And Commissioner Tate had asked me, you know, just go down there and, and walk around it, I, I'd heard that it used to be a movie theater, but since I've been here, it's just been, been grown up.
Gracious memories.
Yes, yeah.
TMI.
Yeah. But in, in walking the property, it lays really, really well, and we have since cleaned it up so we can see what's down there a little bit better. We've kinda got rid of some of the brush and some of the scraggly trees on the, on the first part, but this is kind of a drawing of, of what can go down there. So I'm here tonight just asking if, if that is a possibility, if y'all are okay with us moving forward to kinda plan a dog park in that area. Like I said, this is just a conceptual drawing, obviously there, there need to be water and some kind of bathroom facility down there, the bathroom facility will not only benefit the county, but it also will benefit the town. People walk that stretch all the time, you know, people walk town as much as they do the trail at, at Parker Meadows or the Greenway. So that, that will be a, a public restroom in, in that vicinity of, of town.
You got access to city water, city shore?
Yes, we're hoping if the, the bridge partnership goes well, then, you know, the town will get on board with this also.
The Crawford Branch is pretty close to this?
It, it is, and the only thing, basically the green is just a, a proposed walking trail that, that'll use more of the property. There is floodway, if you look at the, at the small dog side of, of that, there will be some fence that'll need to be placed in the floodway. But from my understanding, as long as we don't concrete the, the posts in and they are considered breakaway, then we've got the okay to, to do that. It, it won't interfere with, as long as we have open mesh fence, which we're not planning on putting wind barrier or anything on it anyway.
The property lays great, it's very flat, there's a lot of great trees already in there for shade, that's something we don't have now.
Yes.
Sort of in a way, it's unusable because it's in the, either in the floodway or the flood plain.
Yeah.
So I think it makes sense.
How many cars do they have to park? I think where you gotta, where you cleaned out the brush, were you gonna just come in off of the street and pull?
That, yeah, pull, pull straight off the street into a parking spot, and, and we can make that as big or as little as we, as we need to, that, that'll be in the, yeah, I, I would think so.
We're looking, just based upon the ones across the street, Commissioner Bill, there's looking like about fifteen spaces based upon what he has.
That's what I can't.
Have to make it a little wider to get that many.
Are we supposed to do our neighbor?
This.
Yes.
This triples the large dog size.
Yes.
Area and doubles the.
More than doubles the, the small dog side, I, I mean, and that's, that's, we can make it as big or little as we, as we want to. With what I have drawn, that's, and you see how much of the property we've used, the whole parcel is seven point, seven point three five acres, and we're only gonna use about one point seven of it, so.
Do you have a guesstimate of what, one lap around that walking trail would be?
I, I do not, no.
Projected cost, did you fault it in that year?
If we, if, if it's that size, the, the biggest expense will obviously be the fence, and the fencing is around fifteen thousand dollars.
In the bathroom?
The, the bathroom would be, would be the biggest expense, but as far as the, for the dogs themselves, the, the fencing is the, the biggest portion, we need two little water fountains in there, about two thousand dollars a piece, you know, to, to water them. And benches can get them anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars a piece, so we'll need three or four of those down there.
Are you gonna, who's gonna approach the town about cost sharing or, or joint?
I'll, I'll handle that when I meet with them about the Greenway stuff, and where we're gonna talk with the town about cost sharing, Paul, is with sewer, water, and taxes with that, and then we'll probably provide, I'd like to see the county provide the fencing, the infrastructure, basically handle the project on county property, but we'll ask the town for help to provide the water and sewer. That's gonna be in your. I've already, we, we've put this to them and they seem to be, weren't they in favor of it?
Neighborhood mixed use, probably.
I mean, is it a respectable use?
Yes.
As, as it's presently zoned?
I would think so, we did have a meeting with them and Justin, the, the town zoning administrator was in there, and, you know, this property.
I've double-checked it before you got too far down the road.
But if I'm not mistaken, I think it is neighborhood mixed use.
Alright, is everybody in favor, I don't think we need to take a vote or anything, just to, let's proceed with taking this to the next step.
Oh, yeah.
A little, little firmer design and some firmer costs.
If, if nothing else, it cleans up an eyesore in, in the middle of town, it'll make it where it looks nice anyways.
And, yeah, we always talked about, you know, above that, below that ain't much. We always talked about farmer's market, you know?
Yeah.
In the future, above that, and that's high and great, I don't get it.
And, and actually the other side of Crawford Branch too, if you clear the cutsu off, there's a, another big flat area there, that's.
Go ahead. I got a question.
Well, this, oh, go ahead, no, well, this is gonna benefit town residents more than county residents.
It, it will.
I mean, so, stress that point.
Yeah.
But town residents are county residents.
True.
People who live within city limits is what I'm talking about.
But you'd be surprised to, you know, how far people drive from, from out of city limits to that dog park just to let their.
We found that out of the phone calls.
Yeah, it's, I, I didn't realize until I started investigating and, and digging into dog parks, so I didn't have anything to do with the, with the existing dog park now, but.
I believe I should've got one ever too much.
I, I would say so.
That's amazing.
Let, let me ask you a question, since this Letterman's in here, a person talked to me about this today. And I, I think they were thinking it was humorous that the new dog, or the old dog park sits under a transmission line. I'm not sure I under, I didn't know how to respond to them, that that was one of the reasons the dog park was leaving, and I had a vision of flash and.
Well, I, I don't think it's that, I think that it's, they need to work on it, and if, if they need to get underneath it, we're in there right away.
Okay. Remember that.
Okay.
Thanks Seth, and if you don't mind, follow up with Commissioner Bill on that pagan.
Okay.
Seth, you'll be getting a copy.
Alright, will do. Thank y'all.
Item, thank you, item eleven H, Audit Services and Contract.
We can take a packet and pass them down, just a paper flip packet, please.
Greenway's spinning eight and thank all y'all for your service and back to you.
We'll make sure everybody's got one and I'll start handing, as he's passing them down. Okay, you ready?
No, I'm already granting, just looking at it, you know me, thank you.
Okay, so December the nineteenth of twenty eighteen, I issued RFP for audit services for Macon County. We advertised this on our county website as well as in the Franklin Press, I directly solicited six firms based on their experience with auditing counties. The proposals were due to me by January twenty eighth of twenty nineteen, I did receive three proposals. One from a firm, Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company, they're out of Whiteville, North Carolina, I don't know if you're familiar with where that is, but that's out, out near the coast, kinda like the totally opposite side of the state from us.
Right, close to Wilmington.
Wilmington, yes, we were, we received a proposal from Martin Sterns and Associates, CPA is our current firm, and we received a proposal from Gould Killian CPA Group out of Asheville, North Carolina. So when you evaluate the total cost, when you look at the cost to provide our audit and financial statements, as well as the cost to do the Medicaid and TANF agreed-upon procedures, which is required by the state auditor, and then you take into. procedures, which is required by the state auditor, and then you take into account the airport authority's audit cost, because historically the county's auditor is also the airport authority, authorities auditor, and it makes sense because my department keeps the books for the airport authority. So when you look at the total combined cost, uh, Thompson, Price, Scott and Adams was seventy eight six, Martin Starns seventy eight eight, and Gould Killian was eighty five three fifty. So based on these numbers, I would recommend staying with Martin Starns and Associates at the grand total cost of seventy eight eight. And of course though, the airport authority would have to award their own contract at their meeting, but, um, the con, also attached with your packet of information is the Martin, uh, Martin Starns, uh, engagement letter that goes along with the contract to audit. And that contract to audit accounts is prescribed by the North Carolina Department of State Treasurer, State and Local Government Finance Division. So all cities, towns, counties in the state of North Carolina must follow this audit contract. So like I said, my recommendation is staying with Martin Starns and asking you tonight to approve this audit contract in the amount of sixty five thousand eight hundred. And then those agreed upon procedures will be a separate engagement letter. And then like I said previously, the airport authority would have to approve their own audit contract.
Motion to approve the finance directive recommendations.
There you go. We got a motion, a second, just a quick question, Lori, I can't help myself.
Uh-huh.
Um, I, I understand that there is a comfort level, especially from your department, who works so closely with Martin and Starns and you have been for years, and there's a comfort level of working with them.
Right.
Have a great relationship. I completely respect that. Um, from an omniscient point of view, uh, it seems like it would be wise to switch that audit firm every so often so that you have a different company, a different set of eyes overlooking your financial records. Uh, I'm asking you, I'm, I'm not in the care by any means, I'm asking you, I mean, I understand your professional opinion is that you wanna use Martin Starns.
Right.
Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I do.
You think it would be wise to use someone else? I mean, it's for a two hundred dollar difference, I understand.
Yeah. Well, and I don't.
It's like determine, as you start with how they switch out people.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
You may have the same firm to get half same.
That's a, that's a, that's a comforting factor.
Yes, every few years they rotate out the audit, uh, partner that's involved and the audit manager.
Okay.
So since I've been here, I've, I've had three different audit, I've been here seven years, I think, and almost eight, I've had, I think, three different audit partners and three audit managers. So they rotate out the staff. And I wish I had brought an article, Stephen Gauthier, he's with the GFOA, which is the, the Government Finance Officers Association for the United States and Canada. And, um, he has actually written articles about, you know, is it really necessary to, to gain that independence or a fair look to change audit firms? And in his professional opinion, he says, no, because of those things I just mentioned. You rotate your audit managers, you rotate your audit partners that you're working with. And so that gives you, because of course you wanna, you know, make sure that you're working with a firm that has, especially in our case being a county, dealing with Medicaid and then all these new things that the state auditor keeps rolling out and putting on auditors to have someone that is well versed and fairly local. That worries me a little bit with that firm being in Whiteville, um, you know, so.
If you had a chance to read this audit that Martin Starns just did, the banking business, they've recognized that. And for a while they had that loss, said, yeah, the change firms. Now they rotate people out.
Yeah.
There isn't no brat.
All right. Any further discussion?
Go ahead, Carl.
Um, first off, thank you for putting it out to bid this year. I, I can't remember, what was the audit, what did audit cost last year?
Sixty eight.
Sixty, sixty nine something.
We got a substantial increase in eighteen because of those new regulations. Yes, we did. I don't have.
And you'll see a biggie in twenty twenty with Medicaid transformation.
Oh, don't tell me that, Ronnie.
You will. It's coming.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have the consent agenda. Be happy to remove anything and there was the addition of the minutes from the February seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting, which are, were on our desk. Uh, we'll be happy to take a motion to approve these or we'll be happy to pull any item out and then discuss it.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Jones.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. So we got a second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, appointments, uh, reappointment of Mr. Gary Schmidt to the Vacan County Airport Authority. And a motion, Carl?
Still move.
Got a motion from Carl.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, we have some TDC appointments.
Yes. Uh, those will be for Connie Gruberman, Patrick Graham and Katie Laflamme. Uh, each of them currently serve on the TDC and their terms have expired. Uh, TDC is indicated.
Yeah, another three years, looks like, and this will be there.
I make the recommendation to be approved at the TDC.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shields. A second by, by Commissioner Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, equalization and review, that was on our desk. Um, Dwight Vincent, Bill Morton, Donald Holland, Gary Drake, Christine Flague. We get a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
By Commissioner Shields, we get a second. By Commissioner Higdon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item D, uh, we have an ETJ appointment. That would be.
Janet Green.
Janet Green.
And it was.
Motion be approved.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of.
Preserving the attorney's private privilege.
So moved it through.
Motion by Commissioner Bill, so, second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
All right.
Are we expecting action for the media?
Possibly.
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 Okay.
Chester, do we need him?
Yeah.
Derek, he should be in here, yes.
Many of yous, you've got to be at home, come on. He's probably feeling. There he is, hockey tip for the cocoa.
Food and drinks to take home, so.
All right, Chester.
Gentlemen, if you'll remember, uh, last year, we, uh, settled a Fair Labor Standards Act claim that had been made by one of our deputies, who was a canine handler for the Sheriff's Department. As you'll recall, it was learned during the process of dealing with that claim that, uh, the canine handlers that Macon County has, uh, basically care for their dogs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and as we learned, um, they were to be paid for the time that they cared for and fed their dogs outside of their normal work hours. Uh, the canine handler deputy had not been paid for that time, and, uh, he had in fact cared for and fed his dog outside the normal work week. And, uh, so as a result, uh, the county was able to, uh, work out an amicable settlement of that claim. Now, in the process of doing that, the county, as, as well as the sheriff, both, uh, recognized that the, uh, county and the sheriff had three other canine handlers in Macon County, and they were similar si- similarly situated as far as this Fair Labor Standards Act issue was concerned to the deputy who had made and settled that claim. And I think, uh, both the sheriff and the Board of Commissioners wanted to look at that situation and, in fairness, treat them the same way. Uh, so the sheriff and the Board of Commissioners, uh, basically were trying to do the right thing, uh, with these other three deputies and to make appro- appropriate pay adjustments for them as well. Uh, I want to report to you that the sheriff and the county have worked, uh, with these other deputies who, uh, were similarly situated and have worked out, uh, general releases of claims with each of them, those three individuals being Clay Bryson, David Blanton, and Steve Stewart. Uh, I've had the occasion to advise, uh, you of the terms of those general releases, and it is my understanding that you desire to approve them for execution, uh, for the basic terms for settlement. Uh, the, um, agreement with Mr. David Blanton would provide for him to be paid, uh, back salary of twenty-six thousand, seven twenty-four, and eighty-three cents. And with FICA retirement and 401K, the total, uh, cost to the county of that settlement would be thirty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars, thirteen cents. For Clay Bryson, uh, back salary of thirty thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars, ten cents, and with FICA retirement and 401K, total cost to the county would be thirty-seven thousand, three fifty-nine fifteen. And for Steve Stewart, uh, back salary thirty-two thousand, nine eighty-seven, and seven cents, and with FICA retirement, 401K, the total cost to the county would be thirty-eight thousand, seven fifty-three, and twenty-one cents. Uh, so, you total those together, the county is essentially going to be, uh, having a cost to resolve these claims for one hundred, eight thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. Uh, I want to report to the commissioners, as well as to the public, that these individuals, uh, did not come to the county asking, uh, for payment, but instead, the sheriff and these, uh, commissioners felt it was the right thing to do to approach them and treat them equally. They have very graciously and amicably sat down with the sheriff and resolved these claims in accordance with, uh, what has, uh, been discussed. And if the board is inclined to approve these general releases, which I've discussed with you and which I have here, um, the commissioners would need to do a budget amendment in the amount of a hundred, eight thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, uh, and appropriate that from the general fund balance.
Mr. General, I'd like to make a motion as liaison to the Sheriff's Department, uh, that we reward these three, uh, employees, one who's not, who with the Sheriff's Department, and two who are, uh, and thank them as part of this motion, uh, for how they've conducted themselves during this oversight. Uh, it will not be forgotten, and we appreciate it greatly much, as does the sheriff. And we thank you greatly much. Uh, so we'll, I'll make a motion that we appropriate a hundred, eight thousand, four hundred ninety dollars from the fund balance with an appropriate budget amendment to adhere to the Fair Labor Act as outlined, and, uh, again, with our thanks to these deputies.
And to approve the execution of the general releases.
And to approve the execution of the general releases.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bill, a second by Commissioner Shields, any discussion? Um, I'd just like to, uh, state, following Commissioner Bill's heels there, is that, uh, you know, I'll, I'll just make it real quick, what's right is right, and that's the correct thing, now, that's the correct and the fair thing to do. So with that being said, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. By Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody travel safe.
Thank you all.
Chester.